Their chairman is stalling the meeting to order and let introduce Caterie Walsh who's on the committee and if you go around, everybody introduce themselves.
I'm Kathy Sullivan. I'm the nurse manager for the medical surgical units on that Mercy Hospital, including the palliative care unit.
I'm Lauren Smith. I'm an oncology liaison with Sister Caritas Kings Center and the U.S. Oncology Network.
Dan Keenan, I'm vice president for ad hoc sick care relations for Mercy Medical Center.
I'm Phil Glenn. I'm a medical oncologist, hospice, palliative care doctor, and co-director of the palliative care unit at Mercy.
So as I started with the questioning, the five phases, five phases of care?
Depends. Probably somebody else would have three.
Okay.
Are you talking about the Kula Ross?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I haven't read that in a while, so I'm not going to tell it's all five phases, but part of, part of it is just, that you hear your diagnosis, you have to accept your diagnosis. There's a denial phase that then another level of acceptance in, and that other level of acceptance actually becomes a really important part of our conversation with patients because we're kind of pre-programmed in our survival mode to just say, I can't quit, you know, don't quit. And if you stop getting treatment, you're quitting. And that's just not it at all. There's a difference between quitting and accepting. And, and there are times that you just have to accept the reality of this is what it is. How am I, how am I going to best be able to move on from here with myself and my family? And I think it very much becomes a quality of life issue that we, we're all predestined to die, but how and where that happens, that's something we can control. And so I think that that's part of the palliative care unit. But the other part is palliative care unit is not just for people at end of life. It's for anybody with a serious illness that have symptoms that need to be managed. And it also, what's unique about palliative care is, and what I really enjoy about it is that it's an interdisciplinary medical subspecialty. To, to, to look at somebody's symptoms, you also have to incorporate quality of life issues. Where somebody's going to be able to go home to, to get treatment, whereas how, how well are they going to be able to afford it? What are the psychological or emotional conflicts in their life, you know, relationship wise? So all those things get integrated into nursing care, social work care, discharge planners. So it's, it's well beyond just physicians. And that's, that's a really important message from the palliative care unit.
This has to be expensive.
Yeah.
The cost. How does the insurance fit into this or lack of insurance?
So, so actually, so that's a two-part question, right?
Yes.
Because it is expensive and we were talking about in the hallway that it is expensive, but I'll show you in some of the data here. There's actually a lot of cost savings, tremendous cost savings.
Okay.
Because you avoid things like readmissions or emergency room visits. And it's universally been shown that when people have palliative care consults, that it's estimated that if you have cancer and you have a palliative care consult, over the course of that hospitalization, you can save up to $4,500 per patient. And it's three, and it's, it's less down the order of 3,200 for somebody who is a non-cancer patient. And if you have four or more comorbidities, there's also a very significant per patient savings. And it's got to do with defining what is going to be the goal of care. What are you, where are you trying to get at? And I can give you an example, there's an example in this, in this presentation.
Yep.
So, so that's, that's the expense part of it. The insurance part of it is these are all services that the insured person would get. So, you know, you can look at things like, so, so the insured person who has a good insurance plan, that's not going to be a problem. Somebody has a modest insurance plan or, or, or none. Yeah, that's a cost burden, but that's always going to be a cost burden. These are all services. So we're talking about with palliative care unit, we have, we're talking about something that's hospital-based. Palliative care can be hospital-based, it can be community-based, and community-based is something that I gave you a slide because I think it's the next step that, you know, we really need to think about in our community in general. So it can be hospital-based, community-based, it can be based out of an extended care facility, it can be based out of out of a hospice itself. So the insurance part of it, I'm not aware that there's been any significant insurance issues or denials. You know, as an oncologist, we deal with insurance denials all the time. If we write the wrong anti-nausea medicine, there's going to be a denial and we have to rewrite that. It's seldom that that happens. We might not be able to send somebody home with an infusion pump for pain management. Those are limitations, but those are also limitations that are common to, and they're common to nursing services in all in general.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Do people ever leave the unit or is it like their last stop?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Caterie. So, so for some people, it is the last stop. And, and those people we put in, admit to what's called general inpatient offices. So they come in, we define their goals of care. Some, so, so I say, look, I, I, I don't want any more, I don't want any more disease-related therapy. I don't want you to treat the underlying disease anymore. Just keep me comfortable. So then, and I'm very much at the end of life based on parameters that would tell us that death is approaching. But then there are other people who may have terminal illness, but they're not in the terminal phase of that. So our job is to manage their symptoms. Maybe it's pain, maybe it's shortness of breath, maybe it's anxiety, nausea. Manage their symptoms, get that under control, and then help them to be discharged to a place that they're going to be safe, comfortable, and careful. And that's actually, didn't sound too hard, but it's pretty hard, actually.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. It must be very difficult conversations to be at that state. I wish that I had been able to do that for Danny. Yeah.
To have palliative care. Yeah. Yeah, you know, because for a lot of people and people like the, I mean, I knew Danny a little bit, people like, they want to have a direct conversation. It's, it's, it's the most common thing that happens. If, if I'm talking to a patient and I always say to somebody or their family, if this gets too difficult or too direct, tell me and I stop this conversation. And virtually always patients will be saying, no, I want to hear the direct conversation.
Well, I think Danny would have liked to have been at Mercy because of your philosophy. You know, my son Chris says he likes to go to Mercy because that's where God is. I think Danny would have liked.
Shows up with base there.
I think Danny would have ascribed to that theory and he would have liked that. It's everything else you do.
Why is it that you're the only palliative care in the region?
So we're not the, we're, we're the, we're the only facility that has beds right now. There's, there are palliative care services within a hospital. And actually, you're, you've been around here long enough to remember when, when Wesson was open, right? So on the third floor of Wesson, actually, this was there then, that long ago. There was a floor that we all used it on this, you know, same sort of principles that we're using right now. And so, so and palliative care as a subspecialty is relatively new and certainly gained enormously more acceptance. In fact, there's a chart in here that shows between year 2000, 2022, just been an exponential rise in the number of palliative care programs in America. Yeah, that's it right there. That, that, that people are just recognizing that the quality of metrics in the cost saves. And so hospitals are adapting it. The vast majority of hospitals, I think it's like almost 90% of hospitals that have 300 beds or more have palliative care program. And also the majority of hospitals who have 50 beds or more have palliative care programs. We were just fortunate to be able to put some beds there designated with this space.
How many did you say are in now? How many beds?
There are eight beds now.
Eight.
Are you hoping to have more?
Yeah.
It's a monster handle.
No, I think, yeah, I think that that's our next step. You know, we kind of, this was, we're kind of operating on a if you build it, they will come philosophy. And, and that's actually what's happening, what's happening to the nurses that we really need. The nurse is really a driving force here. And, and they're gravitating to be part of this. I mean, how many more nurses would you say?
Oh yeah, my, yeah, my nurses that work on that unit, they kind of fight over who's going to be in that section. They really, there's some of them that just really, that's where they want to be. They want to further their education. They want to be a part of committees and processes moving forward to make everything even better than it already is.
Now, how about the skills of the nurses? What designations do they have to have?
So we have offered palliative care training, end-of-life training for them. Also, it's, it is prior to this, you know, they did it, but it's a little bit different now. So we are offering more training for them.
So about, we've started, we've started with some sessions and educational sessions on, on end-of-life and phases of end-of-life. And so we'll continue with those. And this, the center, the CAPC, they offer educational programs as well. So there, there are going to be plenty of educational opportunities for the nurses.
They do a lot of modules online as well as part of their just regular yearly competencies that they need to complete.
Is it voluntary being on that floor?
No. So it's the, it's the department that they work in, but they also get to choose their, their assignments. So there are some that are drawn to that and want to be there.
So we're part of, so the, the, the floor, the, the area that Kathy manages has multiple medical subspecialty. We're being one, we are one of them. And there are nurses that are gravitating to take care of patients on the palliative care units. So as that population is, since those nurses grow, is there a need, we have eight beds, can we go to, we go to 12? I think within the next year or two comfortably.
And I can tell you that just talking about our nurses and things that, when you mentioned that your son likes to come to Mercy, because, so there are definitely, we have staff that gravitate to Mercy. We have patients that gravitate towards Mercy. And just a couple of things to talk about, since we're talking about it now, things that our nurses do for our patients at end of life that I just have never seen before, you know, they'll.
It's an atmosphere that you feel when you walk in.
Yeah. So they do things like make molds of the loved, their loved ones' hands for, so that each family member can go home with a mold over their hand. I mean, you could tell the story about, they'll write a letter for a patient that isn't able to write a letter to their loved one.
Oh, wow.
You know, these, these things happen that, yeah. So.
That was, that, that was, that happened just recently. Yeah, there was a young guy. He wanted to go home. He was apprehensive about going home and not getting the same level of care that he was getting. And there were a number of other factors in his going home and but he also kind of felt that, he also felt like this is it, this is my time and I don't want to drag this out. And he said, but I got to talk to my son. His son was a little guy. And but he couldn't bring himself to do it. So one of the nurses went in and sat down with him and he just dictated what he wanted to say to his son.
Wow, that's wonderful. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
Yeah.
That you could do that.
Yeah.
I want to say this, doctor, my, my wife had the worst, one of the worst forms of breast cancer. And we went through chemo, she went through radiation, she went through surgery over a full year. And you were so good when you made your rounds at that hospital. And my wife never forgot that. What you do.
Somebody's trying to reach you on Zoom. Somebody's trying to reach you on Zoom.
You think so?
Yeah. It says there's someone on Zoom.
Yeah.
They want you. There's somebody. Let me ask Daisy how we can access it.
Yeah, there's someone on Zoom with no names.
Wants to join us?
Yeah.
Someone on Zoom. It seems like old times.
Who is it?
Tony Revosa.
Tony, Tony. How you doing? Tony, Tony and I go way back on the city council and Tony was instrumental with this whole project.
We wouldn't have it without Tony.
You wouldn't have it without Tony. Tony, how are you?
You asked me to be here. Like I said, it seems like old times. My old colleagues there.
Hi, Tony.
How are you?
Yeah, you've been wonderful with this, with this whole thing. You want to, you want to get into a little background on how it started with Andy Ye?
Well, you know, Andy's unfortunate passing a brief 10 days, two weeks before his 60th birthday. He had an impact on so many people and, you know, it was, it was really, I think, Dr. Glenn and Sarah that sort of planted the seed that led to a movement and a desire to get this done. As Dr. Glenn likes to say, you know, Andy had a level of care that, you know, everybody should have, but because of who he was and what he meant to the community, he, he got a little bit of a, I think of an uptick in terms of service. And the feeling is that everybody should be entitled to that. And, you know, the other thing that, as I was listening to the conversation, that, that Phil had said to me back, you know, months and months and months ago, that I think has had a profound impact on me is the fact that while we're at eight to 10 beds, we could probably use double that and fill them all. So we're, we're, we're definitely filling a need. The process to raise money to continue to expand the unit remains. You know, and, and that's it. I mean, Andy was a dear friend of mine. You know, Sarah was committed to establishing some sort of a, of a memorial to him, a living memorial that would benefit people. And what began as a discussion about a sponsorship of an infusion suite morphed into so much more. You know, we've raised a million five to date, not lost upon anybody is the involvement of the city of Springfield and the mayor and the use of, you know, ARPA funds during, during COVID. I don't think there frankly was a more fitting use of those dollars. If you recall back in the early stages of COVID, when people were dying and not knowing the direction that the pandemic was going to take. When you look at how all of these dollars have been spent in these communities across the, the country, I dare challenge anyone to say that the use of ARPA funds in this instance is provided by the city of Springfield and Mayor Sarno and city government wasn't an entirely appropriate use of, of those funds in helping us make this thing a reality. So.
Tony, how, how do we reach, how do we double the bed capacity on fundraising? That's going to take, that's going to take a lot of work and the ARPA funds aren't available anymore. How do we do that?
Well, the ARPA funds represented 250,000 of what was raised. So we raised 1.250 on our own. You know, it was a combination of local business community, people, contributions from corporations, banks, foundations. I mean, we gobbled together, you know, a good coalition of people from within the community that are community-minded and recognized that this was something that the city and the region needed to have. We're going to continue to draw on that. You know, we, we have an incredible development team over at Mercy with and Trinity, you know, with Tim and his group. I mean, they, Tim Stand did a fabulous job in terms of helping us to coalesce and triggering some of that foundation money that was available. So you know, it's just, it was a, it was a good, a good campaign. It was a good effort. But, you know, our work doesn't end, given what Phil stated. It kind of, you know, had a meaningful imprint and impact on me. We've got work to do and we're just going to continue to try to raise the money that we need to the extent that the city can step up and, you know, provide some more funding, you know, at a time that I know is austere. You know, we're, we're not going to turn you down.
Yeah, you know, to dovetail on what, what you just asked, Brian, I think that part of that falls on, basically falls on Kathy and I generate data. Because if we generate data to show that meaningful data, right? So we've had 100 patients. If we're showing that we've decreased readmissions by 48%, 28% cost per day savings and that we've reduced outpatient transit transfers to other facilities, you know, if, if we've shown consistent cost savings, efficiencies, quality measured metrics, that data becomes much more of part of a meaningful ask. You know, it just gives, it just gives Tony that much more to work with. And, and I see that as our responsibility right now.
And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the staff that's there under Phil's direction because, you know, listen, it takes a special person and, and tremendous. I mean, it's like doing God's work. You know, it's, it's a, it's a situation where you've got oncology nurses. I mean, I, I couldn't do it. I admit it. I readily admit I couldn't do that job. Probably one of the toughest jobs anywhere. And the fact that we've got quality people on this staff at Mercy and providing comfort, you know, to not only patients and families. You heard a couple of the stories here today. It's a difficult thing to do, you know, and to be able to do it every day and do it stoically and, you know, keep to the issue at hand and, you know, and, and it's emotional from time to time. So, you know, hats off to the staff, you know, I, I, you know, what we did in terms of fundraising pales in comparison to what that staff does on a daily basis and the good work that goes on there under Phil's directions.
I mean, how's, how big is the staff, Phil, Dr. Glenn? How big is your staff over there?
The staff, well, actually, it's, you know, I was thinking about the cost of this. The staff is the staff. I mean, it's the same nurses that were going to be on the floor anyways. The same, you know, I mean, that's kind of the beauty of it. That it's not, there's no incremental cost for startup staffing here. They're already there. Do we need a little bit more resource in terms of discharge planning things? But yeah, the next step is going to be developing meaningful relationships with extended care facilities so we can impact their qual, the quality of the transfer. So a patient doesn't end up being transferred to an extended care facility back in the emergency room two days later. That, that, that's got to stop. And, you know, that's the sort of thing that we have. That's like, that's the low hanging fruit. And that actually, Dan and, Dan and Lauren can talk to this because, because it's another part of what you're asking about where the money's coming from. You can't work for Sister Caritas and not realize you got to know where the money's coming from. And these guys can talk about the value-based care component of it because that's kind of the next step.
Before we. Listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check out, I'm literally, I just literally walked out of the State House to do this. And you're in good hands with Phil. I see Dan Keenan there at the table. He does a great job for Trinity as well. And I just, I want to thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, and the forum provided. And it's great seeing you guys as always, 30 years, hence my time on the council. So.
Tony, I want to thank you for taking the time out and coming on this call. You've done so much. And like you said, there's so much more to do.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Kate, thank you.
Nice to see you.
All right.
Talk to you and not see you.
We were wondering who was trying to, who was trying to talk.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add to the, some of the points that are made about this impactful work. And that was just yesterday, I was at the Mercy Medical Center board meeting. And one of the presentations that we had there was regarding the Andy Ye Palliative Care Center, the work that's happening and the impact that it's having on people's lives and the need to continue to tell the story to help to, to raise additional funds to try to provide more, more services. But this wouldn't be happening if it wasn't embraced in the leadership of Dr. Glenn and the care that's provided by his team that is making people feel inspired that this is something that they want to have in their community.
And also people can actually give money as a gift. They can give to this. Insurance, life insurance or whatever they are, cash or whatever they can give.
Yeah, there's multiple different ways and even naming opportunities still exist if you want to be associated with the, with the Andy Ye Palliative Care unit that we have. Yes.
Fabulous.
I would imagine a lot of it is word of mouth. People are starting to be treated, they're, they're going to talk to their, their family, they're going to talk to other people. People are going to want to come there.
Yeah, in fact, I know for sure we've had patients that are not from Sister Caritas that are from other oncology in the community that have come to our emergency room to seek palliative care. And we've also done some directed missions as well from other places for the palliative unit.
I think this is so fabulous and you're, you're just so dedicated. It's a hard job, especially end of life. It's, it's hard, but you're doing it.
Yeah, you know, it is, Brian, but one of the reasons I got into palliative care, I'd been oncologist for about 10 years. And I have been taking, so now I was taking care of patients who I had been involved in their care for 10 years.
Yep.
And now they're, and now they're moving on to more advanced stages of disease. And I, and I wanted to get good at this because I didn't want to just hand things off to somebody else, right? So it's, it's certainly not easy. It's certainly challenging in taking care of it. But to me, it's much harder to just say, well, okay, well, that's it. I'm, you know, I'm handing you off to somebody else right now. Or, or to, you know, to, to, to not be there at the end, to be able to take care of those needs as well.
And the patient probably doesn't like it. You don't want to start up with a new doctor if you're familiar and you like someone.
Yeah. And you don't want to have that feeling of, of, you know, what's now and, and some kind of abandonment of, right? Yeah.
Definitely. So how do people get referred to you for this?
Physicians, right now I'm just doing consults within the hospital. So it's the hospitalist team primarily.
Do people in the state get referred to you?
Kathy said that that had.
It has happened, yes. Word of mouth. I, I actually, even just the other day, I was on the unit and some, one of our own nurses came up to me and asked me, I haven't even told you that. She wanted information. So, you know, how does this work? My family member is receiving chemotherapy. We're getting towards the end of life. So I went through the whole process with her. So yes, it's, it's, it is, it's spreading.
It's spreading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else?
How do you do the actual fundraising? Is it only through the foundation or?
Yeah. So the Mercy Medical Center does have a, a foundation board and they have, this has been one of their more significant initiatives. And it's, you know, under, you know, Dr. Glenn's inspiration and Andy Ye probably is the real inspiration for this. It's been a very, I think, very satisfying from seeing the community come together and so many different people, large and small donations that have come together to bring this from a dream to, to a reality. And, you know, I know the folks here have obviously seen it right from the, from when it was nothing to when it's, you know, impacted people's lives. So it's been pretty special.
Is Andy's family still involved?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's great. That's great. So you don't do like a signature event just for your unit? You rely on the board?
We, we have had, had events associated with this, but at this point, no, we're not, we're not like necessarily have an event.
Golf tournament?
Yeah.
There, there have been a couple of golf tournaments of patients whose family and then they subsequently give, but we have not had, you know, the Andy Ye fundraiser event. Tony brought together a huge group of people that were in the 91 club, that dinner club. And, and so tremendous contributions then. And then as Dan was saying, a number of large gifts like not just from the city of Springfield, but also from Mass Mutual, at least. Yeah. So there was a lot of generosity.
Governor Baker.
Governor Baker, yeah.
They, yeah, the, in the unit itself, I don't know if you guys have been there since all the, when were you guys there?
Couple of years ago.
You know, there's photo on the, oh yeah, on, on your.
Yeah.
There's photos of it, but it just, all the, all the recognition of Andy is up the right there on the pamphlet there. You can, it's just, it's really pretty. It's worth coming to see if you guys want to come back. If you're happy to.
Oh, yeah. I'm more than happy to take another tour.
Yeah. So we have, we have eight beds. They've been transformed into something that's much more, you know, kind of patient family friendly, a little less clinical. And there's a space for a physician, family consult and other respite areas. So when families are staying for a long period of time with a visit, they have to do some work and maybe they have some kind of a meeting and they have a space that they can go. Then another smaller private space for more intimate conversations between maybe clergy and family or that's.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, this has been great. And let's set up a tour, maybe after the first of the year.
Sure.
We'll have a tour and then whatever we can do to help you raise money, because we're all, Caterie and I are involved with raising. We'll have a tour and then whatever we can do to help you raise money, because we're all, Caterie and I are involved with raising.
You're gonna say we're at the end.
That, no, 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 I wouldn't say that, no. But, no, no, we're involved in the raise a home, raising money for breast cancer, and that's a great cause. And this is a, this is a great cause.
Yeah, it's, thank you.
They hope they don't have roommates, because I always.
They're all private, yeah. They all have, um, in each room, there's a a chair that pulls out into a bed for there's two of them at least for each, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a special family waiting area.
Certainly making.
And a consult room for Dr. Glenn, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's good space.
Yeah, there are more doctors besides you though, right? Is there mostly you that people see?
It's myself and Doc, Dr. Laurie Lociano is an intensivist, and so she and I are co-directing it. And um, yeah, so one, actually, one of the things that we're also trying to do is make use of Zoom in the, in the rooms. So somebody's in the room, yeah, if you think about it, Caterie, you 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 got families coming to see somebody and now you can zoom somebody in.
Miles away.
That example I gave you of the of the guy who was, wanted to communicate with his son, he had daughters that lived in Minnesota. We could have just brought them, and that's just so much better than on the phone.
Oh, yeah, because you could see visually and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they can see what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can use that to coordinate with next step, so so we can also have somebody, here's, here's the extended care facility you might be transferred to. Here are the nurses you're gonna see there and bring them up on the screen.
Wow.
Doing great work.
I hope you're very successful, as I, you know, having been through a lot of this as a family.
Yeah.
I think at the end, it's important to be
Yeah.
comfortable, especially for a patient.
Yeah, absolutely.
Makes a difference.
Great, so we'll put that together first of the year and uh, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for taking the time out.